This administrative, informal, and workshop session of this meeting of the School Board of the Virginia Beach, Virginia is hereby convened at 4:00 PM on this 27th day of September 2022. We welcome those members of the public here with us today in person, and we welcome our viewing and listening public as well. As always, this meeting can be viewed through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VVTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. It's the Board's protocol to break at 5:30 to prepare for the formal session, and we will do so unless the Board votes to continue until 5:45. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. President Andy Einstein Lab for Chair Rye, Vice Chair Millen, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Manning, and Ms. Wiens.
Thank you. Good job. All right, we'll go right into School Board Admin Matters and Reports. Does anybody have anything to share or report? All right, then, hearing none, we will go right into our formal... Did I skip somebody?
No.
Okay. We'll go right into our first agenda item, the forecast.
Yes, ma'am. So you guys should have a copy of the forecast in the packet, and it's up on the screen for you. So this is the next quarterly forecast, the second quarter forecast, which will start on the October 11th Board Meeting. So just as a reminder, these are senior staff, initial recommendations, and some of these are items that are recurring, and you'll note that as we go through. And of course, if there are things that we missed or things that need to be added, you'll let us know. So we'll start with the 11th, the proposed workshop there on Student Discipline and Behavioral Supports. We also have, for information there, an update on Educational Equity Plan Tri-Campus and Calendar Adjustment that you'll hear more about this evening. On the 25th, more about the Employee Input Process and an instructional update from D-Tol, and then you will see on there, that's our proposed date to bring forward a resolution regarding the reversion in revenue over and under actual budget. So that's an annual thing we do in October where we start talking about, after we've trued up the school year, what the reversion will look like to City Council. We have been there for information, information on the Recovery School, talk in the public meeting that evening about the reversion resolution, the formal meeting, and then the PRC recommendations. You can see on November 9th, we've got planned a General Assembly Session Legislative Agenda Discussion in advance of the General Assembly Session, and then a Facilities Update Plan. Those are, the General Assembly Legislative Agenda Conversation happens about that time every year. On November 22nd, we've got D-Tol coming forward just to give you a first quarter update, the work of the Division in Teaching and Learning throughout the first quarter. You'll see, we'll be bringing forward one of our comprehensive evaluations as part of our Program Evaluation Schedule. That's Chief 3000 and some anticipated textbook adoptions. On December 13th, you'll note that most of the workshop items are yours. That's where you start discussing organizational matters ahead of the January meetings. We will bring another forecast for third quarter, and then we'll have an update on the Compensation Study, which should include at that time a market analysis. You'll note there, too, that we have scheduled our first public hearing on the budget. So last year, there seemed to be some, some lack of clarity on the purpose of that hearing, where folks were saying they didn't understand why we were having a hearing without having a budget already in place. This is the pre-budget hearing where we're taking information from folks who may have thoughts about how the budget ought to be developed in advance of the budget development process. You'll note there, we have another one of our evaluations from a part of our Comprehensive Evaluation Program, and that'll be on Year Two of PBIS valuation, and then also piece of information on our College Readiness Assessments, and that'll take us to the end of that quarter. So I'll just pause there for any questions.
And there's only one meeting in December, correct?
Only one meeting in December, that's right. The second one will fall on our winter break.
Also, on November 9th, just to note, people make a note that that is a Wednesday.
That's correct. That's moved because the 8th is a holiday and election day.
Right. That's a good thing for us to emphasize again in the October meetings. Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Also... Somewhere I saw in here that you were doing an update on, oh, on October 25th, an update on Voice of Employee Input Process.
Correct.
That committee actually met today, and I will be bringing forth today in committee, during committee time, what the committee's come up with. So maybe we can just emphasize on the 25th that people need to be registered. There'll be more details on that later on. So thank you for, you know, just to confirm that the retreat requests have been honored. I see them here in this quarter. Anybody else with a question or missing info?
And obviously, as we always say, it's a dynamic document. Information can be added and moved as needed, and so just, or just note if something we missed.
Okay. So that brings us to Agenda Item C, our Department of School Division Services update. Welcoming Mr. Freeman.
Good afternoon, Chair Warren Rye, Vice Chair Millen. Under the Board's instructions, at the last School Board meeting, we gave you a brief update on our status for starting off the new school year. Today's brief is intended to give more detail regarding the work of Division Services. Each of our directors will be presenting the walk of the work of their respective offices, and you'll hear from Melissa Ingram from Facilities, Eric Woodhouse from Maintenance Services, Sam Nix from the Office of Custodial and Distribution Services, JT Lash from Transportation, Tommy DiMartini from the Office of Security Emergency Management, and Jika Harrison from Food Services. In addition, going into more detail of the work being done in Transportation, Security Emergency Management, and Food Services, this is the first time during my tenure that you'll be receiving this level of detail regarding the work that we do in Maintenance Services and Custodial and Distribution Services. And I'm excited for you to hear and understand the incredible work that our entire team does to prepare for a new school year and where we're focused moving forward. You'll likely have many questions as you're processing all of this. May I request that you hold your questions until the end of the brief, and we'll be happy to answer your questions at that point in time. And we will start with the Facilities Team and Melissa Ingram.
Thanks, Doc. Good afternoon, everyone. Again, my name is Melissa Ingram, and I'm the Executive Director of Facility Services. Happy to be here this afternoon. And following me up also under Facility Services is Eric Woodhouse and Sam Nix, talking about their respective offices as well. As, as a reminder, as you can see up on the screen, from a facility standpoint, we have over 90 sites in our school division, over 11 million square feet of space, and approximately 1,900 acres of site area to maintain and improve. We've had summer work occurring in some fashion at all schools and administrative facilities this last summer in order to get ready for the school year and that exciting first day of school. We credit our efforts to our teamwork at both the admin and project management level, working alongside all of our site-based teams, staff, our building managers, custodians, and landscape personnel who work over at our school buildings to help maintain both our sites in the summer and during the school year. So again, as a reminder, no schools are empty throughout the summer. There are either programs going on, such as summer school programs, athletics, or we have summer work, summer projects going on where we accommodate our school personnel as well as students in our buildings at that time. Summer is, however, a great time because we do have less impact in terms of personnel in the building for preventative maintenance, some things that we can normally not get, be able to access or maintain during the school year or just to check on those. We also have a more rigorous cleaning protocol throughout the summer. A lot of our cleaning protocols have been enhanced with COVID-19, and we will maintain those clean, disinfected, and safe areas throughout our school buildings. Our team's also involved with a lot of special event support throughout the division, things such as graduations, trainings, things of that fashion. We often have to support a lot that goes on in the summer in terms of those special event programs. In terms of summer school programs, we also support these. It's surprising, even though summer is just over, we are beginning to plan for our next summer planned projects coming up in our next summer fiscal year. At the secondary school levels, high schools and middle schools, we often do this work in conjunction with summer schools that are planned, and the schools that have less intensive work, as well as STEM academies and athletics. At the elementary school level, there's often summer slide and STEM activities there as well, as well as summer catch-up. We ensure to maintain areas, particularly after COVID, areas in the building, even when there's extensive work going on, that students can go ahead and work with school staff to do some summer catch-up required. And again, these schools are full of program regarding regular education, Title I, Special Education, Parks and Rec, and we work hand-in-hand with the school personnel to ensure our summer projects are done in a safe and careful learning environment for the rest of the students who are in the building. In terms of school readiness, we have had a very successful school year and a very successful start. So we are... Next slide.
Thanks, she got it.
Thank you so much. Okay. So now I'm going to look here at the first part of this slide, the CIP Plan Projects, and Eric Woodhouse will join for the second half of this slide. So as you can see, we've had over 25 large capital improvement program projects that we've worked on this summer. That includes roof replacements, HVAC upgrades, various items in our various projects that you often see the CIP, such as fire alarms, press boxes, auditorium seating. We have our grounds, tennis courts, and playgrounds improvements that take place, as well as energy performance contracting. We work to include sustainability and energy-saving initiatives throughout all of our, all of our work that we do in terms of CIP and maintenance. And this had a budget of roughly $36.8 million this last summer. As most of you might be aware, the, from passing by, Lynn Haven Middle School addition is also going in full force. We're looking at that being completed in spring 2023. But again, with the goal of summer readiness, the school is still operating while this addition is being put on. There's been improvements there to the commons areas and the kivas in order to maintain a separation of those spaces while the work is going on there. So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to Eric Woodhouse in Maintenance Services to discuss the rest of our summer planned projects. Thanks.
Thank you, Melissa. Good afternoon, excuse me, Member of the School Board and Dr. Spess. I'm Eric Woodhouse, Director of Maintenance Services, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to share some of the great work done by the Office of Maintenance Services. I'm proud to report that we completed over 170 planned projects this summer. A few of the projects are still in progress, but they will have little to no impact on instruction. Completing 170 planned projects is a daunting task. It would not have been possible without the hard work of our Maintenance Services team as shown by a few of the pictures on the screen. Projects are identified through five-year projection of needs that the Maintenance Services team constantly updates. Each project had a well-defined scope, specifications, schedule, and follow all procurement protocols. Maintenance Services completed interior and exterior painting at 11 schools, electrical upgrades in 20 of our facilities, which included replacing LED lights, performing preventive maintenance on switchboards, replacing parking lot lights, rebuilding main breakers. We completed HVAC repairs on smaller scale compared to the larger projects and facilities. We had carpet replacements in its entirety at nine schools. Replaced stage curtains, resurfaced, excuse me, handball courts, replaced intercom systems. These are just a few of the projects of 170 planned projects that were completed this summer. Although we accomplished much this summer, there's still work to be done. Please know that we're constantly assessing our facilities, we're planning, and we're prioritizing the work with the understanding that we must stay true to core function of routine and preventive maintenance. With that understanding, last year, we completed over 67,000 work orders, which are the day-to-day maintenance requests that comes from our over 90 facilities. The 170 projects, the 67,000 work orders, were the most completed in any given year by Maintenance Services staff. Let me click the next slide. Okay. Moving forward, I'll share two of our current initiatives for Maintenance Services. First, the Demand Response Program that we initiate each, that we initiate each summer. The Demand Response Program involves curtailing energy usage on a scheduled day for one hour. We shut down our HVAC systems, knowing that our facilities can maintain the built-in temperature until the test is completed, so there's little to no impact on instruction. We chose 55 facilities, and with 52 being schools that are the biggest energy consumers. The Demand Response Test Program has proven to be cost-effective with credits up to $250,000 this year. The work was done by our Energy Manager and our Electrical HVAC shops. Second, Genetech Control Platform. Maintenance Services introduced a Genetech Control Platform to the Division with the understanding that it would bring all the key components of monitoring security on the one platform. The system unifies video surveillance, access controls, intrusion detection, communications, analytics, and mapping, and digital mapping on the one platform. In April this year, the Governor issued a mandate requiring school divisions to create a detailed and accurate floor plan for each public school building or certify that the existing floor plans for each school building is sufficiently detailed and accurate. Since the mapping feature was already in the Genetech Platform, Maintenance Services was able to complete the required floor plan updates by the August 31st deadline. Our Maintenance Services team will have digital maps for every school, identifying camera locations, access control points, and cutoff locations for utilities. This information will be shared with Mr. DiMartini to be shared with the first responders. TRIRIGA Management Program is our new initiative in Maintenance Services. TRIRIGA is a workplace management program that will help project and estimate future replacement costs and needs for all Division buildings and assets. TRIRIGA also contains a work order management model that will eventually replace our current work order management program called School Do. The plan is to field test TRIRIGA at Greerun High School next month with full implementation Division-wide next year. I want to thank you for your time, and I will pass over Mr. Sam Nix.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm Sam Nix. I'm the Director of Custodial and Distribution Services, and at this time, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to present to you some of the accomplishments our office made this summer to prepare our facilities for the return of students and staff. As Ms. Ingram provided earlier, the space square footage and the acres our facilities rest on, our custodial team takes great pride in being responsible for keeping it all clean and free of debris. This past spring and summer, our custodial team completed over 120 projects, planned projects as. Some of their projects included screening and recording over 25 auxiliary gyms and gym floors, stripping and waxing all the floors throughout the division, and we pressure washed nine complete schools and sidewalks. As this slide shows, you can see we take great pride in taking care of our facilities. The first, the first slide is of Brookwood Elementary, where we screened and recoded the floor. The second one is Lincoln Park Elementary School, where we stripped and waxed the cafeteria. And the third one is the before and after picture of the pressure washing project that we performed at Northland.
I love that. Yes, I'm very impressed. Love it, love it, love it.
Also, also providing clean and safe buildings for our students and staff remains our top priority. The new cleaning and sanitizing protocols that were developed as a result of COVID are now part of our daily routine protocol. These enhanced cleaning and sanitizing protocols are what we follow to get our facilities ready for the return of all students and staff. Thank you. As with many of our neighboring districts, we have faced challenges retaining and filling custodial vacancies. To address some of these challenges, we continue to collaborate with the Department of Human Resources to participate in Division-related career and recruiting events. We also continue to provide onsite interviews and expedite and train to fast-track qualified applicants to fill these vacancies. Another effort which continues to have an immediate positive impact is the return of our Custodial Substitute Initiative Program. This program provides an opportunity where our current classified non-exempt VB CPS employees are able to work as custodial substitutes to assist with absences and vacancies. Our non-custodial classified employees are also eligible to participate after attending a three-hour custodial training course. In this slide, excuse me, in this slide, you see a couple of our dedicated custodial members, team members, and one of our four RAP vans that, that displays the position that are being hired for throughout the division.
I love that, too.
Our distribution team is our internal postal system. We deliver and trans, and deliver and distribute all divisions and departmental mail. We also continue to provide continuous school support by delivering student records, kindergarten materials, furniture, custodial supplies, printed materials and forms, textbooks, and our Department of Technology supplies. We also assist in the removal of any kitchen equipment, surplus computers, and surplus furniture. We also provide all, all support to all Division-related events. We deliver risers, tables, chairs, petitions, that's just to name a few things, and that's for graduation, career fairs, and any other special event that, that is held by the Division. In this slide, you can see some of our dedicated, our dedicated distribution drivers, along with one of our RAP vans, and a, and a pic that they travel in daily, and a picture of our, our distribution center. I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to share just some of the accomplishments our office of Custodial and Distribution Services have succeeded in completing this summer. We'd also like to say, even without vacancies, our custodial team came together and made sure that we did not miss a beat, and all our buildings were ready for opening for the return of students. Thank you very much. And I'd like to pass it over to Mr. Tommy DiMartini, the Director of Security.
We'll get it.
We're going to get it straight. We're making progress. We've come a long way. Have we missed anything? Good afternoon. Allow me to add to Mr. Freeman's presentation to you on September 13th as it relates to the Armed Security Officers Program, as well as provide a brief overview of our back-to-school efforts conducted this summer and then our plan for moving forward. Mr. Freeman mentioned we currently have nine armed security officers in our high schools and five security officers in our middle schools. Shared with you back in the spring, these are former law enforcement officers who met the required Virginia State Code and guidelines. They volunteered to trial for the program. They were mostly employed as security assistants at the time, although we did have a few new hires, and upon, upon completion of training, they were moved to, they were moved to the Armed Security Officer Program. And we are currently seeking candidates as we speak. Their training consisted of classroom instruction for DCJS courses on active shooter emergency response, emergency evacuation procedures, and threat assessments. The candidates also received firearms instruction conducted by the Virginia Beach Police Department's firearm training team, and everyone had to pass to qualify for the program. And please take note that the requirements to pass are more stringent than the Virginia Beach Police Department's requirements. My office also determined the gear that everyone would need to be provided. We acquired the necessary items to include firearms. We purchased Glock 17 Generation 5 handguns, three magazines, along with pouches, a durable duty belt, and the most advanced retention Blackhawk T-Series duty holster. In keeping with our professional look of our security assistants, we acquired similar-type shirts with a visible badge on the chest, as well as 511 tactical pants, as you can see in the picture shown and provided to you. All SSOs were provided a detailed expectation sheet that they reviewed with an Office of Security and Emergency Management representative, line by line, and the initial each one. The expectation sheet were later shared with the building administrators. And finally, each Office of Security and Emergency Management, or OSUM, coordinator will contact our SSOs individually on a weekly basis. The Office of Security Emergency Management rolled out a robust back-to-school training program that provided employees of various departments instruction on how to prevent incidents and manage crises. I'm proud of the efforts my team, I'm proud of the efforts of my team, but just as impressed with the buy-in from our leadership and staff as relates to Division-wide security training. We trained new and returning principals, threat assessment, crisis management, best practices for special events, search and seizure techniques, interior and exterior security posture, to include an overview of lessons learned from Uvalde, Texas. And we fully integrated our new Raptor drill management module. We continued to provide non-crisis intervention training to our security and selected instructional staff. The docile team was briefed on their roles and responsibilities as it relates to emergency management. The entire staff of Food Services was given a class on Run, Hide, and Protect. OSUM attended and presented to the School Resource Officers at their annual in-service training. Our project manager continues to press forward on the transition of all two-way radios from analog to digital, and this entails the delivery of the new radios, along with a hands-on instructional explanation. And we also conducted multi-agency joint crisis, security, and infrastructure training at Corporate Landing Middle School. Representatives of Division Services, Virginia Beach Police Department, Fire Department, and the City's Office of Emergency Management were on hand as we walked through an incident and proper response strategies, as well as tested our Federation program. Continuing with our summer training, 71 security assistants, either new or up for their two-year recertification, received two days of instruction, consisting of DCJS mandated training, Raptor responsibilities, and Genetech capabilities. In addition to these instructional classes, 11 individual schools requested training from OSUM and our coordinators for their crisis response teams. 13 individual schools asked for a class on Run, Hide, and Protect, and 13 schools also requested tabletop exercises. These exercises allow for teams to work through various crisis scenarios. Tabletop exercises are provided throughout the year as well. Over 100 hours of training was provided to the staff from the Office of Security and Emergency Management. As we continue to improve upon the 2018 Blue Ribbon Panel's recommendations, we will resume the school audit process that was suspended in March of 2020. 23 schools will receive our full detailed audit to include an interview with staff and selected students. And moving forward, we'll resume the three-year rotation process. twenty. Twenty-three schools will receive our full detailed audit to include an interview with staff and selected students. And moving forward, we'll resume the three-year rotation process for the division. Am I, is my timeline?
No. Sorry.
We're done.
We began conducting audits last week, and we plan to finish this year's audit process no later than November fifteenth. In addition to the audit process, for the first time under my tenure, we will conduct unannounced sec, security inspections. The Office of Security and Emergency Management has already begun this process, and we plan to continue this practice throughout the school year. I will now turn it on over to Mr. Lash, although he's sporting the UVA colors.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm JT Lash, and I'm proud to say I'm the Executive Director of our amazing transportation team here for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I appreciate the time this afternoon to update you on our Transportation Department, things that are happening in this department. So often people don't realize what we do, but we safely transport thousands of students to and from school and inside the division, outside the division, everywhere else safely. It's just amazing what our team does on a daily basis. So to get started, prior to the opening of this school year, our department held its annual in-service Transportation University. This was the first face-to-face department-wide meeting since COVID-nineteen pandemic, and it was wonderful to have our transportation family back together again. I would like to acknowledge Dr. Spence and Mr. Freeman attended, and they got our employees pumped up and excited for this upcoming school year. You might ask why the name Transportation University. You see, obtaining a commercial driver's license takes a lot of effort and studying on the part of our trainees. On average, it takes four weeks of studying, classroom training, or instruction, on-the-road training, as well as testing to obtain a CDL license. Our Transportation University, like universities, provided additional learning and training to advance our employees' knowledge in response to employee feedback and request. The department partnered with other VBCPS departments to provide some of the training from in-house professionals. Topics to help our employees and students be successful included positive behavior intervention strategy, often referred to as PBIS, a presentation from, on engaging students through a responsive trauma-sensitive lens, accidents, red light, stop-on camera use, as well as other safety topics. Also, Transportation conducted a session which was a takeoff from a very popular game show where members of the audience are selected to come on down.
Yeah.
Contestants played game show games and tried to guess the cost of items such as radios, tires, et cetera, including the cost of a new bus. Now, you might ask why, but we want to make sure that we have fun in training and people realize how much these things cost. So it was very enlightening to folks how much radios and those things cost, so therefore secure your buses and take good care of stuff. So this led to a great deal of audience participation, especially when it got to the pricing of items where people were saying higher or lower, yes or no. But most of all, like I said, it was very informative on the cost of these items. We received very positive feedback after this very successful in-service. All right, thank you. So as Mr. Freeman stated in his presentation earlier this month to the board, the Transportation Department is looking to improve our on-time arrival rate, given the influx of new drivers being trained and hired. As you can see from a snapshot of data on the screen, you can see how we're doing. Our total number of to-and-from regular education bus runs on September thirteenth of this year was two thousand three hundred and ninety-one. The total number of late arrivals to school sites on the same day was a hundred and five. On-time percentage was ninety-five point six percent. However, this doesn't include special needs buses, substitute buses, or absent drivers. This is only school site arrivals, and it's not really the bus stop or arrival town, arrival times, but with them arriving at school on time, they're within the window to make the stop and be considered on time. Because of the exclusions mentioned earlier, the real number is probably closer to ninety-one percent. However, this is a department task to, to increase as we bring more drivers onboard. Okay, as you can see in this, this slide, Transportation Staff members, our VP, VBCPS Communications Department, Human Resources Department, we've all been very busy. Up top is Chris Sprouse and Sherry Scott, they're our Training Department. And over on the right, that was the Care Fair, they were recruiting, not only recruiting, but also giving or providing information to parents about buses. We've had our banner bus strategically placed throughout Virginia Beach. You might have noticed it in conjunction with some of the larger concerts that have taken place over at the Amphitheater, we parked it at Landstown. And then on the bottom, you'll see in the far-left picture, that's actually one of our trainers, our, um, trainees, excuse me. Christopher Eklund came from the Hampton Road Show to produce a segment. And so we had several of our trainees be interviewed by him. This particular individual, she, she mentioned that she was a mom, she liked the flexibility of driving and being able to take her children on the bus, as well as saving on childcare costs. So I think that was a great message to send out for advertising for us. The gentleman on the, in the middle picture, he's retiring from the Coast Guard in a few months, he knew we were looking for drivers, and decided to, once again, answer the call and serve his community by driving students to school. And for those folks on the instructional side, he is looking maybe possibly becoming a middle school teacher at some point. That's great. And the other guy, that's me, so. Some friends said that I was becoming a news reporter because he's seen me on all these channels, but anyway. Next slide. Okay. Since April, when the board approved the new compensation package for school bus drivers, Transportation has provided numerous events to recruit school bus drivers, including, of course, graduations, regional job fairs, Care Fair, and then interviews on all of the channels multiple times, in some cases. Your approval of our plan and our recruitment and training efforts are paying off. Since July first, we've conducted six bus driver training, commercial driver's license classes. We have fifty-five individuals who have been fully trained and licensed. Those fifty-five have been contracted as bus drivers. And yesterday, we started another class of sixteen individuals who are now in training. And as you can see, we have five more classes scheduled for this school year. So we are continuing to recruit and train school bus drivers. We owe a lot of credit for this success to our Training Department, Mr. Sprouse and Ms. Scott, as well as our numerous on-road driver trainers. They have really pulled together to do this without jeopardizing instruction or safety. So they've done a phenomenal, phenomenal job, and we anticipate to be fully staffed no later than February. Of course, we couldn't have done it without y'all, so we appreciate that. And that's a snapshot of Transportation. And at this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Vika Harrison of Food Service.
Can I ask a question about the buses?
At the end.
At the end. At the end, Donnie.
Oh, okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Vika Harrison, and I'm the Director of the Office of Food Services, and I'm here today to provide you with an update on food service operations. As you may already know, the federal pandemic waivers that allowed our district to provide meals at no cost to all students have now expired. What that means for us is that we have to revert back to traditional operations, and that is to operate the National School Lunch Program and the School Breakfast Program. Under these two programs, meal costs are based on individual student eligibility, which is free, reduced, or paid. In anticipation of federal waiver expiration, we did not increase prices for this school year for the paid portion of the student meal. And breakfast meals remain at a cost of a dollar forty per meal, and the lunch meals remain at two eighty-five. Please note that these prices have not increased in the last five years. Providing healthy, nutritious, and tasty meals is a critical part of every child's educational journey. And so we never know that in some instances, school meals are the only meal a student gets for the day. As part of the biennial state budget, the General Assembly has provided funding to cover the reduced-priced portion of the student meal. What that means for our families is that if somebody qualified as a reduced-priced person, they will also receive meals at no cost. Additionally, our division has applied and received Virginia Department of Education approval to operate twenty-seven schools under the Community Eligibility Provision Program. These schools are listed on this flat slide, and you can see them divided by level. For the elementary, we have twenty schools. For middle, three, and for high, we have four schools. Under these, under this program, all students attending these schools receive meals at no cost to those households. Our district has nearly twenty thousand students benefiting from the CEP program. Our district also has nearly sixteen thousand students benefiting as qualified and reduced. Households needing an award letter for other benefits aside from free and reduced meals, even in a CEP school, should qualify, should apply for free and reduced applications because there are other benefits that are associated with those applications. Such benefits include low-cost internet, dental, and daycare benefits, as well as various testing and college application fee waivers. Because meals were provided at no cost to all students last year, our division served a record-breaking number of student meals. We broke over ten million student meals served. We anticipated that going back to normal pre-pandemic operations will affect student participation. You can see on this chart, the data for the first five school days of meal service going back to pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic operations three years ago through the current year. As you can see here, we're indeed seeing a slight decrease, nearly seven point four percent, in student meal participation as compared to September of two thousand nineteen. We believe this is due to the current inflationary times and families choosing to save money by not paying for school meals. Of course, we're serving twice as many meals as we served in the September of two thousand twenty school year when schools were closed and parents were picking up the meals via drive-by pickup model. In comparison to September of two thousand twenty-one, we are seeing about a thirteen percent decrease in student meal participation. We believe that is due to the meals being served free to everyone as compared to now we're going back to traditional operations. However, the decrease is slight, and we have reason to believe that because of the increase in the number of CEP schools, more students will start eating in our cafeterias again. Also to, also to help entice our students to eat in our cafeterias, we are expanding the Scratch Cooking Initiative to include all schools. We initially had a six-year kitchen modernization plan for Scratch Cooking Initiative expansion. However, due to COVID-nineteen and the national supply chain disruptions that have delayed the CIP projects, we decided to have scratch menu items be part of the division-wide cycle menu, so all students have equitable access to our nutritious home-cooked type meals. Of course, we're continuing with the, with the Scratch Kitchen Modernization projects, and you can see on the slide, we have thirty-three school kitchens that have meal Scratch Cooking equipment, and we also have added eighteen school gardens starting this summer for a total of thirty-five division-wide school gardens. The intent here is to have a school garden at every school, not only to provide fresh produce to our Scratch kitchens, but also to educate students on sustainability and farm-to-kitchen concepts. Through nutrition education, students learn that produce grows in the garden and doesn't just come from the grocery store. Another exciting news from our department is that the food truck is almost completed. Our mentor has informed us that the outfitting will be done, and the truck will be delivered to us by late October. On this slide, you can see a picture of what we expect the truck will look like. This truck will serve a multitude of purposes, from being a mobile Scratch Kitchen featuring some of the same Scratch Cooking equipment that our schools kitchens have, being an alternative meal service model for our schools, as well as be utilized for student educational tours and district catering events. You can also follow us on social media by looking at the slide and seeing the website listed on here. We have a very, very busy what's happening around the cafeterias photo slide on our social media, and we also add YouTube channels for more educational purposes. Right now, we continue to add recipes, we have thirty-four educational videos, and so even if you're an avid person that likes to cook, you can go there for recipes and you will learn how to cook in the kitchen. More recipes are also forthcoming. Well, of course, we cannot talk about food without showing you some pictures of the food, and so here you will see that the most popular scratch menu items voted by our own VBCPS students. The cinnamon crunch cake, as well as kolache, which is also called the sunrise pocket, have tied for the win for the most purchased student breakfast meal so far this year. We also strive to provide meals that appeal to our district's diverse student body. For example, this month, in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, we are serving chicken enchiladas, fresh taco salad, and chicken quesadilla, and Mexicali corn as part of our culturally inclusive recipes. These meals intended, ended up being voted as most popular scratch menu items alongside pasta with meat sauce, scratch pizza, and cheese flatbread entrees. So moving on from menu items, so you're not getting all hungry, to personnel and student education. Similar to Custodial Department, the Office of Food Services is experiencing some challenges in filling our cafeteria vacancies. However, we are optimistic that these vacancies will be filled in due time. However, in the meantime, we have partnered with various school programs to provide education to our students while they help us in the cafeterias. This is a win-win situation where students receive lifelong, lifelong skills, learn how to apply math through recipes, follow directions in panning food, and working as a team to accomplish a goal. On this slide, for example, you can see Salem High School students participating in a mentorship program, learning valuable culinary skills, and how much fun it is to be a food service hero. They're making flatbread pizza and panning cheese bites, and you can see how much fun they're having. We're working to span this mentorship program to all the high schools. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Freeman for any questions.
All right, that was a lot. I gotta tell you how incredibly proud we are of our entire team, and this gives you a little glimpse in the support that Division Services provides to our students. So with that, I know that you have questions, we're happy to take them. Just because of the way this will flow, those who have a microphone, they're gonna stay and answer questions from the microphone. Others up there.
I started a list. Okay, we have a list? Okay. So one comment, one question, I'll put you on. Mr. Lash, thank you for including the conversation about PBIS. Some of us attended the teacher forum yesterday, and on the elementary level, PBIS was one of their glows, and I think that shared language is important and that, you know, what happens the Christopher Farms way transfers onto that bus, I really, that was, that was really great. Thank you for that. And Mr. Meeks, do we, or Mr. Woodhouse, do we still hire in the summer to help with those projects? I know my brother back in the eighties did those gym floors.
Actually.
Either one.
If you're gonna answer, please come on up. Yes.
Sorry.
Yes, we, we will be getting back to that from, because of COVID, we hadn't.
Oh, okay.
But we will be getting back to hiring for some projects to help with the gym floors and also to help with our distribution team.
That's awesome.
Is it Sam Meeks?
Nix.
Nix, oh, that's why. I didn't think you were Meeks.
NIX.
You know what? I knew you weren't Meeks, and I was like, that's not him. And I just want to comment, I, I'm in that warehouse a lot, and you know, sometimes you take the best side picture, but that warehouse is immaculate, and every, every picture you would have taken would have been perfection. It's, it's really a beautiful place to see.
Thank you. Yes, Sam Pack, our, our Distribution Coordinator.
Yes.
Scott Spurgeon, they take great care of our warehouse.
I beg your pardon, Mr. Nix.
That's okay.
All right, uh, Mrs. Haltz, you're on, and Mrs. Felton.
Just a response to that question, Ms. Melnick. So, um, for the larger CIP projects, we do hire temporary employees in the summer to help us make sure that our contractors are not in the buildings on their own.
Okay.
So our supervisor of construction oversees those. So we, we do still hire temporary employees during the summertime for our larger CIP projects. But, um, as Mr. Nick stated, because of COVID, um, we have taken a little bit of a hiatus on the custodial distribution and maintenance side of the house.
Okay.
But we have been, um, you know, always in touch with Technological Career Education and ATC on, um, their students there for opportunities.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Haltz.
I wanted to ask about the bus training. I've heard so many positive comments about the excellent training that people get. And I think you said it, it took, it took a month to complete the training?
Yes, ma'am.
So I wanted to just hop, how was that delivered? Like, is that daily or weekly, or?
Yes, they have a week, um, of classroom instruction. And then they, they go to DMV, they take and get a learner's permit, a commercial driver's license, learner's permit. We line them up with a on-the-road driver trainer. Some people can grasp it in the four weeks. Some, you know, might have to take a little bit longer. But then they go on the road with the driver trainers. And we actually, our staff took the initiative a few years ago to go and become third-party testers because it was so hard getting into DMV, especially during COVID. So we actually will do the DMV test, uh, in-house.
Oh, that's great.
So for, for some of these larger classes, though, we do rely on sending some to DMV, but it's quite a process and quite lengthy to send them to DMV. So it takes, on average, four weeks. And they cover all the nuts and bolts of the bus. Right to managing passengers, pretty much a lot of it is, uh, State Department of Education curriculum that they have to cover, as well as some of the federal and the DMV, um, commercial driver sample.
Well, the reason I asked is now you are paying the bus drivers a training, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Because before that, there were so many complaints about it was so time-consuming that they couldn't find, you know, a job elsewhere, and that a month was too long. So that's why I asked, like, it's a certain number of hours per day, or it varies depending on the person. Is that what you're telling me?
Well, they have class for eight hours a day for the first week. And then they're sent out to, to like, they have to get their, they have to get their learner's permit at DMV, so that's time for them. And, you know, if they, if they can't master a certain part, like, for instance, the air brake test. I was a trainer years ago. The air brake test for commercial driver's license is the hardest thing to learn. So some people who are mechanically inclined can probably pick it up really quick. But others, that's, that's one of those things where, you know, you climb the mountain, and it takes you a while to get up there.
Sure, I get it, I get it.
Once you get to the top, and you like, it's like, ooh, why didn't I get that?
That's hard.
A lot of time is spent on certain items of the bus, uh, but we wanna make sure everybody is qualified to drive and safe drivers when we, uh, release them with the bus.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
In consideration to my colleagues, in the short time, I've tried to ask one question, get by, suck around. But I'd like to make a statement to all of you. Uh, I wish I could get my sit-in and make me a electronic compot put in my pocket and just click it and come and ask a question. I am really impressed, I'm serious. I'm really impressed with all that you've done. And I like to tell a personal story, then I'm gonna ask a question. But, um, I was over at Lynn Haven, and, uh, I became a, a, um, a prime subject for the Raptor security. My grandson information transferred over to Lynn Haven Middle, but mine didn't go over. So Mr. Malik at the desk made me have a seat, and I could not move until he checked me out.
That's good. I love it.
And I'm sitting there, and all of the teachers and he kept his job, and I just wanna give him outstanding grade. He was awesome, courteous. He was very polite, but he said, ma'am, you're gonna have to have a seat because we have to call, you cannot take this child. And he acted with everyone that came, and I just said, Raptor is working.
And if I may, I know that you're just making a comment. I cannot tell you how much I thank you and I appreciate because it's, uh, when leaders lead by example and they let our security teams do what they're supposed to do, it makes everything easier, makes it work, and they know that this is the right thing to do for everybody that comes in the door.
Exactly. And after that, the principal came to have me running out the door and says, it's fine. He was doing his job, and he did well. He said, have a seat, ma'am, I'll be with you in a second. I'd just like to ask Mr. Nix, um, about the three-hour training that the custodians, they are getting, and what other incentives or professional development that we're giving our custodians? Because I want to say, when I walk into the schools, I'm always impressed. I'm with their floors, with their, just the whole atmosphere. It looks good, smell good, walks good. So they have a three-hour training. So what other incentives are we giving them in professional development?
Well, as far as the training goes, uh, we, we give them training on chemical and asbestos safety, all the COVID nineteen disinfecting protocols and processes, and also, um, routine building cleaning protocols that we, that we design. Like I said, all the, all the enhancements that, that come as a result of COVID are now our daily, our daily processes that we do when we clean our buildings.
Thank you.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, I'll take the, the one on the, because you asked about
The incentives and the professional development that comes with that.
Yes, so related to incentives, and the reason why I'm taking this one is it covers two. So you guys received the communication last week where we are based on vacancies, and this is a high vacancy rate. And in collaboration with Human Resources and the Budget Team, we're able to offer a incentive, a recruitment or retention incentive to our custodial and food services staffs. And that's, that's because that's where we're seeing the greatest vacancies. So it's a very similar model to what is, uh, what we're providing to bus drivers this year. So it's three thousand dollars broken up into six payments throughout the year, six five-hundred-dollar payments, and it's designed to be able to, again, encourage more to apply and come work for the division and keep those, retain those good employees that we have. All with the backdrop, we know the compensation study is gonna be concluded here shortly, and we're looking forward to see what comes out of the compensation study as it relates to some of those pay grades for the employees that are more, uh, at the challenging positions to retain.
Let me make this statement, and I'm through.
Okay.
Um, I was told, I know you're, they're getting a training, and I know they're giving a stellar, uh, master work because I was told by one of the city HR people. So yes, we recruited some of your people because they're that good, so we brought them over. I said, yeah, you guys got to stay out of pot. I did, you had to stay out of pot, but they are impressed with the work that we're doing. The City of Virginia Beach are taking our custodian people. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Riggs, and then Mrs. Franklin.
That's just a simple question. What does, uh, what does DCJS stand for again?
Department of Criminal Justice Services.
Okay, Department of Criminal Justice Services.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, Mrs. Franklin.
Well, I just wanna tell, uh, Mr. Nix, I have actually stripped, buffed, and waxed floors before. That is an art. And when I walked into the gym, a, a couple of these different gyms, I am so impressed. I mean, they are like glass. So I just wanna give thumbs up to your team. That is, that is super impressive. And I do, I love our custodians. And, um, and so I do, I wanted to have a, just an idea of how many personnel are in each department, like, in facilities, maintenance services, custodial services, just as a breakdown?
So I'll go around. So, uh, Ms. England?
In facility services, uh, the larger umbrella, we have roughly twenty employees.
Maintenance services, we have one hundred and ninety-nine.
And I'll, I'll repeat it through the microphone so that you all
Custodian, we're roughly about five hundred and sixty.
Five hundred and sixty?
Seven.
Approximately?
Approximately that.
D Martini?
So we have seven in the Office of Security Emergency Management, but we have the security assistants who are assigned to us, although they're supervised at sites. They're assigned to our division. There's over two hundred.
So just to say it on the microphone, seven that work directly for, in the office, and then two hundred and roughly two hundred that are the security assistants and security officers that work in schools.
And then transportation.
Roughly six hundred and twenty-five.
Roughly six hundred and twenty-five.
And then food services.
We have around twenty in the office and roughly four hundred and fifty in the field.
So roughly four hundred and fifty in the field and twenty in the office, so again, similar design to, um, a lot of those employees are working directly.
And, um, are we pretty, I, I know that we had some numbers before, um, and we were doing pretty well with instructional staff, but, um, but are, are we doing better in terms of filling those other positions now that the school year has started?
There's a reason that we implemented the, uh, the retention and recruitment incentive. Uh, I'm looking back from HR, those are still challenging positions to be able to, uh, to add. Ms. Woodhouse, do you have anything to add to that?
We are actually working on success, so we are hoping with a recruitment and retention incentive, that we will be able to afford. We share a little bit of data when we hold in a school meeting. And unfortunately, in our efforts to hire, we're waiting candidates and we're losing candidates. So we appreciate about the incentive, and that went out, and the notification went out today to our food services and custodial staff, and we can be marketing the plan to sell it tomorrow.
And Ms. Woodhouse, you also have a plan for a hiring fair?
Yes, we're actually scheduled to have a hiring fair on Saturday, October fifteenth, and we gave one workshop. We will assist with applications, we'll interview online with fingerprint right at the venue, and then, um, work closely with both departments to hire and make placements at the school set.
And are we finding that, like, um, Ms. Felton said, mentioned, are we finding that we are losing, for example, custodians to the city or our maintenance to the city? Is that, are we seeing any kind of?
Did you have a comment on, uh, custodial staff or those that were unable to obtain where they might be going? Anybody have information on that?
I can share, I will share with you, uh, the city, when we had to discuss the efforts to move to a starting salary fifteen dollars an hour. During the budget process, we elected and looked at the three-year plan. The city moved forward and, uh, up their starting salary fifteen dollars an hour. And so we have seen a loss to the city. But I don't wanna just blame the city. It's, it's everywhere. I mean, I went to Wawa yesterday, and the sign on the door says, starting salary fifteen dollars an hour. So that's part of the conversation as well, through Dr. Spence, around, um, recommendations for consideration for the budget process.
Okay. Uh, we have Mrs. Owens and then Mrs. Manning.
Thank you. Very comprehensive, lots of, um, lots of impressive, uh, accomplishments. It seems like we're almost doing more with less, uh, this last year or so. And so that's, that speaks to our employees and, uh, the quality and all of those things. I did have, I guess, a question and a comment in terms of the, uh, incentive bonuses that we are, uh, now rolling out for our custodial and, um, cafeteria staff. I'm excited about that, and I'm hopeful that as a board, we will have something in the budget so that they are not feeling kind of the pinch that we've had teachers say that we're getting these bonuses. We felt like we were kind of balanced, and then the bonuses expired because it was a bonus, it wasn't a thing. And they felt like their checks went down again. You know, if we can have that, this hopefully will hold them, and then hopefully we'll be in a better place. So I'm encouraged and, uh, hopeful for that. My other question was, well, my question is about the, uh, school security officers. Mentioned that we, uh, got our first wave in, and that they were mostly security assistants. The ones that were not previously security assistants, can you tell us about?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. They're new hires. Yes, ma'am. They're new hires that meet the criteria, so they're, uh, law enforcement officers that leave work for whatever reason in good standing, whether it's retirement or just leaving for personal reasons. And we hired a few of those. There's a few in the pipeline coming to us. The position right now that we're in is that we need to hire them as security assistants because we need to get them first, and then we have to get them to training. Once we get them to training, then we can transition them into the position of armed security officer.
Okay, and I guess that was kind of my question. I, when we talked about it, uh, previously on workshop, one of the, I guess, things that was discussed is that these, uh, are gonna be security assistants that were coming with kind of recommendations from their principal, that they were known to our district, that the principal knew their work ethic, their personality, and that that recommendation was kind of part of what was being looked at as we were selecting those to be armed. And so for pulling them, um, as new hires, it sounds like those ones would not have that, um, relationship and knowledge with the principals unless we're going to bring them in and have them do a required time span as a unarmed security assistant for principals to know and make that kind of recommendation.
Yes. So first, we never wanted to communicate that it was a requirement to be a security assistant first. But in the initial phase, when you roll out a program, we already knew that we had a pool of candidates that was in the school division that were already functioning as security assistants, that we knew, uh, we were confident that a large number of them were gonna wanna transfer, uh, to this. So when we bring in new candidates into the school division, realize that these are positions that work, all, all security assistants do directly for, uh, the school division, or for the principal's key. So for, uh, although there is support that's provided by the, uh, security emergency management team, the principal is involved with the selection process, uh, related to them. And if I understand it correctly, they also do work as a security assistant for a brief period of time.
Yeah, and as I was saying earlier, they, all of them will be hired by the hiring managers, the principal, as security assistants. They will work in the school as a security assistant while we wait until we have an opening to train. So the principal will have an opportunity to get to know the individual, work with the individual, and have an opportunity to tell us whether or not they do, are competent with the individual. So that they also, the principal hires them, so they interview them and hire them. And then they work in the building until we can get, uh, time for them to get trained.
Okay, and that time before they open into the training could be anywhere from kind of what to what?
That depends. Uh, right now, we have two that we're about to hire as security assistants, and we probably won't be able to get them fully trained, uh, until November, December timeframe? So it's gonna depend.
So that's good. And a little bit of background on that is, so as you know, the qualifications are, uh, done in conjunction with the Virginia Beach Police Department. So it is a significant, uh, burden on them every time they go down to the range and, uh, go through a round of training. So at this point in time, we're not going down the road for every new person that's available, sending that one person down to the range to be able to hire. So we're striking the balance of when do we have enough people, how long is too long to wait to be able to implement that? So that's kind of why you hear Mr. D Martini, uh, not talking in terms of absolutes of, hey, here's what, when it's gonna happen. It's more of a balance of, all right, we have candidates, how many do we have that it's worthwhile to be able to take that step and put that training work on?
So there's not a minimum. Some people might have to wait three months. Some person might get hired kind of right under the wire and
Just works perfectly, yes, yes.
And during that timeframe, are they paid as security, as, like, unarmed or armed, or how's that work?
They're paid as security assistants during that timeframe until they meet all the criteria allows them to get the new position, and HR then offers them the new position, and that's when they get the new stuff.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you for, um, helping to clarify that. I wanted to give all I have. Thank you.
All right, so we have Mrs. Manning, then Mrs. Weems. And that should wrap up this round.
Okay. Um, so over the last few years, I've had the opportunity to travel throughout up and down the East Coast, visiting a variety of different schools with my kids and their sports. And I believe we have the cleanest, most well-maintained schools of any district I've ever seen. So our custodial staff is just incredible, our maintenance service is incredible, so kudos to you guys, great job. And, uh, also transportation, the safe delivery of students is just always so amazing to me at how we can do what we do and do what you do. You know, I know that we, we've had some challenges, um, and thank you all for stepping up to try to fill those empty spots, and thank you for continuing to do that. My question is for food services, Ms. Vika. You mentioned that we're trying to, it sounded like we're trying to accelerate our scratch cooking initiatives and that you hope to have it in all of our schools. Kind of what's our timeframe on that?
So we had a plan for a six-year modernization kitchen improvement plan. And the plan for the kitchen construction in progress was linked to the schools becoming the kitchen construction in progress was linked to the schools becoming scratch-ready and offering scratch menu items. Because of COVID and the delays and going along with the construction piece of it, we decided to offer scratch menu items at all of the schools regardless of whether or not the schools were modernized. We still have a plan and we will continue to modernize the school kitchens and include new scratch-ready type equipment in there, however, that plan is no longer linked to offering the food to the kids.
Wonderful. So, when do we anticipate having all schools being, uh, scratch cooking ready?
So, it is a collaboration with facilities, we're trying to tackle pro- each project at a time, we usually do them in the summertime and we have to work around summer schools, proj- uh, summer school, um, and other projects. Um, we anticipate that some of the, what we call low-hanging fruit type projects will get done quicker than others, however, if there is a big project that includes HVAC replacement as part of the hood replacement in the kitchen, those will take longer. Um, we, uh, right now have 33 kitchens done, um, we still have a ways to go, we're looking at about 16 more kitchens, uh, we're hoping to do at least 10 to 12 per year, however, with COVID and the supply chain issues, we have been delayed, and so, um, we will continue to work with, with facilities to modernize those kitchens.
But you're saying that we can do the scratch cooking without modernizing them, is that what you're saying? Okay, so how many schools are doing scratch cooking?
All.
All of them right now are doing scratch cooking?
Correct.
Fantastic.
Correct.
For, for just lunch or?
For everything, for breakfast and lunch, correct.
Okay.
And so, the menu items that we showed were all, were voted by the kids as their favorite menu items at all the schools.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you.
Yes, no problem.
Kaylin, Mrs. Weems?
Uh, yes, I think this is for Mr. D Martini, can you, um, briefly explain, I, I've been a, on a school audit and it took several hours that I went, but it briefly explained the difference between a school audit and an unannounced inspection. I think I know, but I, I, and then I want to add that I think unannounced inspections for safety is just critically important and I'm so glad that we're doing that.
Yeah, the, the audit process, uh, when I first got hired was, um, very detailed, uh, to, uh, the extent that we felt it needed to go ahead and be divided up some, so, uh, we assessed the process, called in all the, the players, stakeholders, and we ended up, um, dividing up some of the, the items that were in there. Um, for instance, I'll just give you an example, uh, there was an item in there that spoke to toilet paper in the bathrooms, and that, in my opinion, wasn't a security, uh, piece to an audit, so we ended up, um, for, you know, putting that to the, you know, maintenance and services staff. So, we ended up streamlining the audit process, which is good, so now it's more specific to security, right? And that now we like that, now it's not four hours, now it's more, um, you know, if we go in with our team, we can accomplish a full inspection of the building, audit of, of the building within 30 minutes, um, which is, which is good, and then we can go ahead and, uh, meet with the staff, meet with the students, and then we put all of that now into a Google Drive and we share all the data, we can, we have the ability now to share all the data and it will also break down, you know, the data that we want to, to receive, so it's a much better process now than probably when you were involved in it, um, and we like that. Problem is that there's 86 schools and does take some time to put the whole report together, so that's where, uh, we decided to go with the, back to the old program. Um, as far as the inspection, the uninspe- on, does that answer your question on the audit?
Yes, yeah.
So, it's my team goes in and we assess everything nuts and bolts from security posture of the building, and we do a lockdown drill and we watch how the staff reacts to a lockdown drill, those types of things. And then, uh, as far as the unannounced inspections, we felt that that was, there's a good time now to go ahead and, and implement that and our staff is ready for it, we've provided, as you saw, we've provided a lot of training and, you know, we've been doing that now for a few years and we feel like it's a good time for our, our staff to go ahead and, um, you know, assess how our building is doing when they don't know about it.
And how many times it's like, how, how many times does a school get that done?
So, we, we're going to be able to do it several times throughout the year and we're also going to capture that in the Google Drive as well, and, um, we're doing the unannounced inspections, we're also visiting our armed security officers as well and noting that. So, the coordinators of my team are going to be in the buildings, more so now the faculty.
Yeah, so the unannounced inspections are basically to make sure the front desk are not letting people like Ms. Felton in without my permission. And I've been helping, May too, Ms. Felton at Herbertson Elementary does a great job. Um, and, and so it's basically to make sure that the doors are all locked and just safety and you pop in and out, pretty much, and you do it several times. Okay, good.
We created a list of items that we'd like to check on when we show up in a building, they're uniform, uh, and we can provide that to you if you'd like, and it's everything from the front desk expectations to, uh, assessing the exterior of the building and locked doors.
Okay, perfect, if I could get that list, that would be great, because I know that's very helpful for the community to know because I've been asked that just in the last couple of weeks about how are we ensuring that doors are locked, there's only one entrance and all that stuff, so I, I'm glad to hear this.
And if I may, in addition, Mrs. Weems, that occurs, um, with our, our performance auditing team too, they also conduct those, um, and we hear about those too, so.
I'll just, yeah, but the surprise inspection.
Those are surprise from our performance auditors.
Nobody knows, it's just.
No, the performance auditors also are surprise and that should be noted because nobody does know about that, and those are, they send people in without badges and, yeah, yep.
And we, we feel like it's a way for us to improve.
Yeah.
It's not a gotcha, it's not hoping to be a gotcha, we're, we're hoping that it keeps, uh, all of our, uh, folks on, on alert and, and doing what they need to be doing.
Yep. Very good, thank you.
Now, Mrs. Owens. So, Mrs. Owens, I understand you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I was just wondering about, um, what the security safety team, sorry, uh, observing the lockdowns to make sure that, uh, you're able to provide guidance where needed, uh, are those happening during the announced visits or are there unannounced lockdowns?
So, now that we have the, we've incorporated Raptor Drill Management, we're able to see, I can see on my phone when every school goes into a lockdown, whether there, it's a drill or an active lockdown, which we haven't had many of those, um, but we can see that on our phone. I get a text alert every time a building, there's a fire drill, evacuation drill, tornado drill, whatever it is.
That's awesome.
That's, that's great, we love that. Um, as far as the audits go, I will send all of you a copy of our audit, so you'll see it, but it is to observe a, uh, a lockdown drill. So, we don't tell them when it's coming, but while we're there, we're going to ask somebody to put the building into lockdown and we're able to then assess how the staff handles that, how the, the faculty handle it, the students handle it and all that.
So, those ones are unannounced lockdown drills, um?
So, this, when they, when they get an audit, the principals are aware that we're coming on a certain date and time.
Right.
And during that audit, they know that a lockdown is going to happen while they're there.
But the parents aren't aware in advance that a lockdown drill is going to happen, that's what I'm trying to understand.
She's asking the difference between the audit and the unannounced audit, so I think what your answer is, for an unannounced audit, there's not going to be an unannounced lockdown drill. He's describing the situation where we know there's going to be an audit on a certain day and as part of that day, it's going to be done and the parental notification that goes with it.
Yes.
There's not an intention to have an unannounced lockdown.
Okay.
Yeah, that's for Allison to clarify.
Thank you.
Sure, I have a question for Ms. Vika, is that okay? It's short, sweet. Um, for food services, it's good to see you and thank you for your detailed information. Uh, you did notice and you gave us the listing of all the 27 schools that fall under the CEP, um, uh, program. I was in the teacher's room yesterday and one of my elementary, uh, kindergarten teachers said to me, um, she's at one of the schools, if that's not on this list, but after speaking with her, I, I said to myself, you know, you can't tell a harmed child that you fed them yesterday, so I want to know how are we getting the message out to the, the, these schools that are not on this list or even those schools they consider not part of, um, uh, free and reduced lunch because we do have that concern in all of our schools, so how are we getting that message to them that they can still get this program or be, our kids and kids can still be fed?
Yes, so we have on our website, uh, we have messaging that goes out, we have alert nouns that go out, um, as part of the, uh, monthly newsletter, uh, we are also, uh, advertising this, we have an online portal that's called School Cafe and, um, what we do is, uh, receive applications that are confidential and they're given to us in a secure format and we process them really quickly, by law, we have six days, we have, uh, staff that process them honestly within hours, and so, um, we do encourage parents that need to qualify for free or reduced meals because as you've heard, the reduced portion now is no cost to families, the state is picking up that fee, and so we do encourage parents to apply online, click RVBfoods.com, click on student meals, the information's right there. Also, the schools have paper applications, um, so if they're not comfortable with online applications, uh, paper applications are fine, they just take a little longer because they get a pony, pony to us, and if there is a language barrier, we have worked with community, um, uh, media and community engagement, uh, we also have translators in the office that can help with various languages.
Thank you.
So, please apply, that is my message.
Thank you so very much, thank you.
Just the other stuff, I think there was lots of things that were addressed, so, so Dossel obviously is a key element to communication when it comes to our students and our families, so I'll give them an opportunity, so I think the question is, for those who are in a non-CEP school who are still eligible, how are they getting the information to know that they can still apply and be eligible for free and reduced lunch, and so, Dossel, can you want to add? We send that out, teach, principals send that out in their communications at the beginning of the year and throughout the year, and I think the other point that's really important is those CIP schools, they need to apply as well because there's other services that could potentially come along with that, so, uh, that's an important message piece, but we're continually asking principals to remind their community on that.
So, Mrs. Delaney, when you bring that up too, so how will our FACE department interact with you in getting, because the works that I know they're involved, what they showed us, is that a, are they a critical part of this as well?
They're extremely critical, I think you mentioned a little bit of that at, at, I think the last meeting of the work of FACE. Example gives the work they did with First Memorial High School, Cook, Elementary and EB middle where, and they coordinated, where there's three schools to go out to trailer parks out for EB Boulevard and work with our ELL families, brought laptops to help them fill out some of the information and get them to understand many of the services that are out there, so they are, they did wonderful work for us to coordinate with our principals, our principals are really getting more comfortable reaching out to them and understanding the services.
Thank you so very much.
All right, I think that covers it, thank you. So, as mo- all of you have most likely surmised by now, we'll be, uh, we'll introduce an agenda adoption, uh, at the time of agenda adoption to add the equity plan overview, uh, as an agenda item on, uh, 17, and, uh, so with that, this workshop is adjourned and we'll be reconvening in chambers at 6 o'clock.